We're going to have an invocation here in just a few minutes. And the invocation is going to be given by Don Miller tonight. Each time we meet, we have an invocation. You can participate if you'd like, and if you don't want to participate, that's just fine. The invocation is given for the benefit of the council. Whether or not you participate has no bearing on what you've come here to talk about tonight. We're also going to do the pledge, and Councilman DeGrom is going to be doing the pledge. So with that, I'd like everybody to stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you do this tonight, we have a city employee that is very ill, Bobby Corner. And we also have a former governor that passed away. And that's why the flags around the state are flying at half-stick. I feel they remember their families.
He did. The other day at the National Day of Prayer, I had an opportunity to be a part of that. And before I led everybody in "God Bless America," I was going to read a prayer. But there was a lot of difficulty with the microphone. And by the time I got up to do that song, I was kind of, how's this going to happen? And I just simply forgot about the prayer. And so tonight, if it's okay with you, I'll pray my prayer, but also pray this prayer that Ethelium Greg Laurie, who was the chairman, national chairman of the National Day of Prayer, had written and distributed, and it was prayed, I'm sure, Thursday, all around the country. But we're going to do it today, if it would be okay. So let's pray. My father and them are thankful for this time we have just now to come together at this meeting. I pray, Father, for these ladies and gentlemen who have taken upon their responsibility to lead this city as the city council. Father, each and every meeting, there's difficult decisions that they have to make. And I pray, Father, that they'll be able to use your wisdom and understanding, draw all the sources of information that they have to make good decisions. Father, we're thankful for this community. We're especially thankful, Father, for the bicentennial. We pray, Father, that you will bless all the activities that are a part of that. Bless those individuals who have worked so hard through these very months to plan all the activities. And Father, we do pray just now for the family of Otis Bowen, who served as governor of this state for many years. A well-liked individual by many parties. Just be with his family during this time. Father, he was a man who gave of his life for the state of Indiana. And also, Father, I'd like to just remember Bobby Corner. Father, there's probably no person in this town who's a friend of Connersville like Bobby Corner. He served in many, many capacities, has given his life for this community and for the children of this community. Just be with him during this time. And now, Father, last Thursday, this prayer was read around the country. Greg Laurie has written this prayer for you. And Father, let's pray this prayer just now again for you. Father, we come to you to pray for our nation, United States of America. How you blessed us through the years, Lord, we rightly sing, "America, America, God shed his grace on thee." Yet we see trouble in our culture today. We see breakdown of the family, crippling addictions, and random acts of horrific violence. Lord, we need your help in America. In recent days, we've done our best to remove your word and your counsel from our courtrooms, classrooms, culture. It seems, as President Lincoln once said, that we have forgotten God. But, Lord, you have not forgotten us. You can bless and help us and revive our country again. Scripture tells us righteousness exalt a nation, but sins reproach to any people. Lord, in your mercy, we ask that you would exalt our country again. We have had a number of great awakenings in America. We've experienced times of refreshing and revivals that have changed not only the spiritual, but also the moral landscape. As a psalmist said, "Will you not revive us again, so your people will rejoice in you?" Father, that's our prayer for America today. Send a mighty spiritual awakening that will turn the hearts of men and women, boys and girls, back to you. You've told us that if we humble ourselves and pray and seek your face and turn from our wicked ways, that you will forgive our sins and heal our land. Forgive us today, Lord, and heal this troubled land that we love so much. Father, we ask this all in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
You all know that Don is a former teacher and counselor, and now pastors the Anhele County Bentonville Baptist Church. Don, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Don, you don't have to say.
Don, you don't have to listen to Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you, Don.
Calling from meeting officially to order. First order of business will be real call.
Councilwoman Rich?
Present.
Councilwoman Weber?
Present.
Councilwoman Shomel?
Present.
Councilwoman Navi?
Present.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilwoman Creach?
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Present.
All present, tonight, we have a forum. We can do business. I've asked that everybody put their cellphones on silent or turn them off, if you would. We welcome you to the meeting tonight. We're going to go through this swiftly. First order of business will be to read the minutes of the last city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion. We accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes as they were sent out to the council people. Are there any additions or criticisms? None appearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you so much. We passed an ordinance page, I think, two years ago, that at the first meeting in May, we would always discuss our water situation regarding the rates and the flow. So Bill, I asked Bill to do this for us. We're fulfilling the obligation of the ordinance tonight by discussing this.
As the mayor says, I guess we're obligated to look at our rates. That's why I'm here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. And for the people that weren't on the board, we looked at the rates last year and Unball finished study for us. And they made a recommendation to this board of what was needed to keep the utilities up. And at that time, the board decided to take those recommendations and implement them in two phases. The first phase went into effect July 1 of last year. And the second phase is scheduled to go into effect July 1 of this year. So after looking at our finances and everything, and we have done some improvements into utilities, although we're real conservative as to what we do and what we spend our money on, we still managed to come out in the black in water and sewer for last year. So at this point in time, what I see as far as where we're at with the utility, I don't see a need to spend the, I think it cost us $17,000 last year to get a rate study done on the utilities. I'm saying that with our current rate that we have, we'll be fine again until another year. But I do recommend looking at them good and hard next year at this time.
Bill, now, you mean with the recommended rate increase for July?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm glad you brought up about the rate study because it was council's position at that time. By doing it in two parts, it would actually save us money and to keep from hiring Unball again. So I agree with what you're saying.
What will the rate increase be on the minimum bill?
On water with the, it was initially recommended for a 15% rate increase across the board on water. So we've already implemented 7.5%.
Okay.
The 7.5% that we're getting ready to implement in July should add on average about $1.20 a month to the average residential bill on the water side.
Okay.
On the sewer side, they recommended a 22% rate increase across the board with 11% of all already been initiated. And that amounts to about $2.85 on the average bill.
Okay.
So that's about $3.85 total. That will go on starting in July.
July 1, yes.
And stormwater stays like it is, $5, $5.20.
Yeah, we decided not to look at the stormwater rates last year. With the Grand Avenue project being a fill-in project and funded by IDOT, if we were to project started, I project that we can do another project after this one with our current rates, which should take us into the year 2015 or 2016. Then we'll need to look at those again and see what direction we're going to go from there with what project, what kind of costs we're looking at.
Speaking of that project and Grand Avenue, are the utilities cooperating? That we can get the information to IDOT?
IDOT.
That seems to be holding things up.
We're certainly trying. We have got a, we have to have all of our materials in by the 15th of this month. I'm still waiting on one utility to give us their relocation plans. And if for some reason I can't pry that out of them, we're going to submit anyway. And basically, what that means as far as we're concerned, if IDOT is agreeable, if there is some of their utilities that are destroyed during this project, we'll not be responsible because they did not submit a relocation plan.
What's the problem?
Good question. I'm not really sure. Several phone calls have been made to this one individual company. And maybe I'm speaking a little out of turn here because I haven't had a conversation with them since last Thursday. So hopefully, since last Thursday, they've submitted the plans.
Okay, good.
And you know, the irony of it is, this particular utility doesn't have any utility in that area so in total.
That's probably why they're not considering.
But still, they need to submit stating, and that's all we need. So that's what's holding the project up.
Good.
And that project right now is scheduled to be let in October of this year. And with that said, it probably won't get started building until spring, possibly later this fall, but most likely in the spring of next year.
So we're a year behind.
Well, at least a year behind. I was thinking this project would have started about a year and a half ago.
It was good that we handled fill-in project because when it comes to the agreed order, we're not in any trouble with.
Right now, we're still on task with our agreed order.
Well, what I need from you then, Lord, if you accept Mr. McDowell's report, I just need a motion to accept the report of the utility director. And we'll move it off the agenda until next May 1st meeting. Unless you want it studied this year. If you want it studied this year, then we need a motion to move forward and study it.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Got a motion on the floor to accept the utility director's report that we won't study the water or sewer this year. We got a second.
Did it say that was a $3 increase or over $3 total, the total increase?
It's going to be about a, about a.
I'll get $4.05 by adding $2.85 and $1.20.
And that was.
That was approved a year ago.
That was agreed to last year for Phase 2.
And it would have been $8.10 apparently last year.
Right, about that.
And we were raising the trash rate at that time. And we just felt that was too much burden on our citizens all at once.
With the exception of Batesville, I had this memorized. We still are lower than most cities our size and almost all cities in our area. There's a few cities like Batesville that are subsidized because they got Hill-Raul. Back when we were subsidized by Visteon with such a big customer, we were flowing pretty good, too. But we don't have those big customers anymore. We've got to carry it with our household customers.
And you have some nearby that have been privatized, and their rates are much, much higher than others.
So we have a motion on the floor. Are there any further discussion on the motion?
The debate.
We'll have a real call vote. This is a very important motion.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Navi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
You have passed that resolution. We'll accept your report. And Bill, like Mr. Creach, as you go. Okay, we have a grant that we've applied for with Duke Energy. The match on is $1,000. If we would get this grant, it would make our airport area shovel-ready for a business. I can't tell you exactly how much they're going to put into it, but it's a terrific deal if we get it. So it's to make 58 acres shovel-ready for economic development. We applied for this, and all we have to do tonight is say yes. The match will be made if we get the grant.
I thought those 58 acres up north, is that where it is? Were already shovel-ready.
It is not shovel-ready. It is with sewer and water, but not with top-toil drawings, with land use, drainage. What am I missing, Bill?
Oh, that would be the things related transportation entering into the site.
There's a whole lot that has to go into it that Duke Energy will pay for on our behalf if we get this grant. And then it'll be truly shovel-ready. But we do have sewer and water to the south edge of it.
So what percentage of match is this?
Truly, it's a very small, it's a very small.
Like 10% or something like that?
Yeah, a very small, yeah. Just $1,000. And we won't spend it unless we get the grant, so. But I do need that in the, when we send the request in, when we send the grant in, we have to have the city's willing to make that match.
I move to match $1,000 for the Duke Energy site rate in this program.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? Any at all? We don't have a real call vote.
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Navi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
You have approved that 100%. I appreciate that. We have a light request for $24.45 in match money for the bulletproof vests. We have been doing this each year. We apply for money to put into the bulletproof vests. Our portion would be $24.45 if we get the vests. This is a whole lot better than us putting out $20,000, $30,000 to buy vests for the police officers. I think we've been getting just a few each year. How many are we with this cover?
This grant is, this grant will get us anywhere from 3 to 6. And it's still unknown, but it's possible we can get 6. And if we get the 6 vests, the quote you gave is the 1, the $24.45.
That's the actual.
Yeah, but if the only allot is 3.
It'll be half of that.
Half of that.
Where are they at in vests in terms of how old they are?
That would take about a third of, about a third of the department.
We have 25 police officers.
What's the age on the other vest?
Well, all our vests are, well, we've replaced about 5 so far. And so we've got another 20 to go, but we got them back in '08. So they're good for six to seven years, and they're at the point that they need replaced.
Mandatory they wear them?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's mandatory they wear them. I have a couple of issues with a couple of guys, but we were on it. So, yeah.
This protects the city and protects the officer. It's a good program. We apply every year. If we get it, we spend the money. If we don't get it, we don't spend the money. We're buying the best set of vests.
Mr. Mayor? I move to set back $2,445 for a match for the bulletproof vest grant.
Got a motion on the floor that we allow the $24.45 match should we get the bulletproof vest grant through the police grant. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have a petition for annexation. This is a voluntary annexation of 17 acres. And the easiest way to describe it, it's north of the Woodridge Inn, 10 acres, and then 7 acres due east. Bill, you come to the floor.
Since Mr. Guffin's not able to be here.
Yeah, he called me before the meeting.
I can probably describe it.
Do you have it on a map, John? I think you do.
Yeah. This is the, I don't know, most of the council members remember when, oh, starting back in 2006, we had the, after the subdivision and the sale of the former Burns Farm, there were a series of, we had two rezones. That was the one that's owned by G&amp;G Holdings, which is Mr. Guffin, who cannot be here this evening. Then there was the other one with the two parcels that were purchased by Mr. Sasser. Now, all of those were then the parks that are outside of the city limits that are rezoned, and then a voluntary annexation. Now, following the, this was in 2006, the voluntary annexation on the part of G&amp;G Holdings was in, I think it was March 2007. Shortly after that was the land swap between the city of Connersville and G&amp;G Holdings. So what remains to, for the annexation, is part of the land that the city swapped to Mr. Guffin's company. That's 17.2 acres. And as the airport, the city never annexed its own property, there's 17.2 acres that is being requested to be annexed. Really, it's the area that's back behind the, everybody seen where the farmhouse was with the Burns Farm?
We got it on the screen up here. Bill, go up there and play it to her.
Now, right near the area, which was, okay, this is the one that's just north of Woodridge Inn. That was the property that was, it was back in the, I don't want to smudge it.
Go ahead, draw.
There was a property that was right here. This was one parcel. Another parcel went back this way, all the way back to the, this property line here that included the room.
That is the room.
Right of way. Another parcel went out this way, then all the way back over to here, then out this way. Now, this is the parcel that was, over here, that was purchased by G&amp;G Holdings. Back over this way, this is a parcel that was purchased by the city of Connersville for the airport. Now, when the land swap included land back here, which was originally Mr. Guffin's, which was added into the city, and the land then that was transferred to Mr. Guffin for the airport, well, purchased for the airport, extends up this way, that's 17.2 acres. And so Mr. Guffin, in the process, is, he's wanting to, they want to actually, they want to annex, voluntarily annex the property. And at the next area plan commission meeting, there's a rezone for the rest of that property that they have to general business.
Okay, Bill, will you show them where the new Walmart store sits now? Point to it.
All right, the new Walmart store sits here. This is the area with the back end here, which is where the, and this area back in through here is where Walmart has the, is there retention fund? The parking is in this area. And right here is that out parcel that is currently being developed. And the Walmart drive goes up this way in this parking area, and then empty that out and see this property, and then also the property itself by G&amp;G. Actually, it's now Marketplace Development.
Where the, show where the barn and the house is right there. Point to that.
Well, the barn's all that remain. This is removed. Here was the house as recently remained.
Now, there's plans for a company on Texas that are taking that. And that's where there's going to be another small shopping center there. Right now with the, what's the name of the big store that's going to be there?
They're anticipating, this is the location where everybody's discussing about the possibility of Goodwill.
Goodwill will be right there. Point where Goodwill will be now, Bill.
At the approximately, my understanding is.
Right back there.
It's going to be this back corner of Goodwill.
That's the reason now we're going to go ahead and annex that. That'll all be in the city. And then I think we have to do a rezone on the 9.5 acres down by the hotel, right?
Yeah, and then the part of the entrance down here. So there's three parcels that will be included. That will be, this one was purchased initially by Mr. Rogers. Then there was the parcel, the front part right here that was still in the city limits. And then there's the 17.2 acres.
So I just to make a long story short, once we get this done, it'll all be in the city, all the way from the railroad grate to the state highway. And all the way to the airport ground, it'll all be in the city.
Now, the only parts that won't be in the city will be all the property that's up toward here and then back here that was purchased by the, for the airport. So the part that still remains, still retained ownership, that's still outside of the city limits after Mr. Guffin's annexation.
This is a voluntary annexation, which means Mr. Guffin's has requested it to be done. No money is against it. And it's an easy thing to do. This is just the preliminary tonight. John has to do an annexation study, which I think we're in the process. All right, John?
Right, yeah, I prepared a petition for annexation, which was signed by Marketplace Development, Greg Guffin, operating manager, which you had before you tonight. And I'm working on an annexation study. We have a notice of public hearing for the voluntary annexation, which Julie now has. And the public hearing will be on May 20, next meeting.
And that's what we're asking you to do tonight, set that public hearing.
Right. I have an ordinance and a resolution that would be dealt with at the, after the public hearing.
I move we set the public hearing.
For a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second that we set the public hearing to the date. What date, John, repeat it again?
May 20.
May 20?
That's the next meeting.
2013 at 7 o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes.
Make that clear in the papers and the radio. May 20, 7 o'clock.
And any of the members of the city council have any questions? Because I have some of the other copies of some of the original paperwork. See if you want a little bit more detail, you know, so I can do that, help you understand that a little bit more.
We have a motion on the floor to set the public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you so much. We have Resolution 2013-09, 2013-Finish 10, 2013-11. We're all receiving money back. We switch telephone carriers, and basically, we're receiving money back when we terminated it in all of those. I'd like to take all three of those resolutions, if you could.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor in a second that we accept that $100 on police, $35.14 on transfer station, $37.58 on refund the park. All at one time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We got that done. We have pending ordinance 3015. This is a zoning code ordinance. And again, I'm going to run it over to Bill and John.
Now, this was the zoning request that originated with the county commissioners. Now, originally, there was some very specific language, which is the version 1. And there were some issues with just some of the languages being very specific to one particular use. And what eventually happened through version 2 was it removed all of the, well, I'll step back just a little bit, because initially, it permitted the executive director of the area plan commission, for special exceptions that were in the planned business district, discretion to waive the requirement for a special exception public hearing. Now, discussions we had previously with some of the members of the plan commission. And then as I had an opportunity to, the attorney that was helping the, prepare the information, the original amendment for the hospital, that I had a personal issue with someone in my position having that level of discretion. I think it's unwarranted to, I wouldn't, I don't think I would abuse that discretion. I think it's unwarranted to, I wouldn't, I don't think I would abuse that discretion, but the potential was there. And as you can imagine, as the, it's a, it's a transparency issue. If you want to give a, uh, executive director of the planning commission a discretion to say, in this location, don't worry about the public hearing, I think that's a mistake and I think that's wrong. And, uh, I don't want to be a party to it. I wouldn't be a party to it, but that doesn't mean someone who might be in this position after me would not abuse the authority. And, uh, so that was the, uh, one of the big changes, actually the biggest change. And then as we went back to one new, uh, uh, special exception criteria, and that was to add, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special exception will not contravene the principles of reinvestment, revitalization, and the avoidance of unintended consequences is set forth in the Fayette County Comprehensive Plan. And what that clause is doing, it's making explicit the, what's always implied that when you make decisions and review them, a special exception, that you should consider in the comprehensive plan. What that one criteria is doing is going to make it required to discuss the aspect of, uh, revitalization, is this appropriate in this particular location? And, uh, that's what that particular clause is for. So it's something you already supposed to do with, with a special exception, consider it comprehensive plan. This just makes it explicit.
That's the gist of what you're voting on tonight, to add those amendments to the area planning for Connersville and Fayette County. Basically, this is city approval by ordinance. Tonight you have a choice. We could, uh, we can pass this on first reading. We, you, remember, they've already had public hearings, they've already discussed this in area planning, so now it's come to us to put the final cap on it. But you could, uh, pass it on, uh, first reading, hold it over if you felt uncomfortable with it, to study it, or to allow some of your constituents to talk to you. Um, but it's important that we get these amendments in. Is there any question on the amendments that Bill described?
Uh, I was at the area planning commission meeting when we discussed this. We looked over, uh, I thought it looked pretty sound. I voted for it the first time, and I would recommend passing it completely tonight.
Are you putting that in the vote for motion?
I will.
Your honor, since he's on the APC, let me make that motion.
May I? Absolutely.
I, I would like to make that motion, your honor.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to accept these amendments to the area planning, uh, which really kind of pulls it together with our strategic plan, uh, so they're going to work together. Is there any discussion? Anybody else have questions? Mr. Baker has, uh, ordered to this, so feel free, if you have a legal question, ask him. None, no questions?
Section two, Bill, the amendment of Fayette County Area Zoning Code, that talks about it.
You looking on version number three?
Yes.
Section two, yes.
Okay. So it's the executive director, which is you, shall refer the application to the commission for public hearing. So that takes the authority away from you, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, what that does is, anytime an application comes in, I refer it to the, uh, the area planning commission for the public hearing.
Okay.
Now, the one that's removed is that's on the section one, right there. So it's on the part that's under the planned business district, uh, which is section one five three point one six.
Okay.
So what that does is, if you're looking at version three, to see all of that text that struck through, that's what's removed from the, in the amendment. So that it's, all that remains of the general provisions is, all applications for any use in the planned business district shall include a development plan, and the following additional requirements shall be in here too. And that's just existing language, it hasn't been changed in a particular section, and that's the development standards.
Are you in agreement with that?
Yes, yes, thanks.
Any other questions? Is there anybody out there wanted to say anything?
Aye.
It's not a public hearing, but, uh, you certainly have a right to speak if you'd like to talk on this issue. None appearing, I will have a roll call vote.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
You have passed unanimously these amendments on first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules and conclude this tonight?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and conclude this and adopt these, uh, amendments, um, on suspension of rules only. Uh, I'm going to ask for an individual rule on that too. This is that important, so roll call.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
You have now suspended the rules, and we can move to third and final reading on this, uh, on these amendments. Uh, if you're ready, I'll take a motion.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass these amendments to the zoning code, uh, tonight. This will be the final reading. Is there any further discussion? Is there anybody out there has any discussion? None appearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yep.
You have passed that on third and final reading. This becomes an ordinance, and it becomes a part of the zoning code. Thank you for your presentation, Bill.
Okay, thank you very much.
Randy, we'll let you go home too, if you want to. I'm just, I'm, I never see him like Mr. Creech. He invites people to go home. I'd like you to stay. Bill, you can't go home.
Oh, why not?
We have, uh, pending ordinance, uh, number thirty sixteen, and this is a transfer in the, uh, for, right?
Yes.
From wage to furniture and fixtures. Um, can you tell us why?
Buy a couple of new office chairs for a couple of girls in the office.
I'm amazed, as tight as you are, that you buy your girls a new chair.
Take care of them, buddy.
I want to tell you something, we spent so little in the clerk's office, we, while she was on vacation a couple of weeks ago, they came in on their own time and painted the office and cleaned it. Had no charge to the city. That's pretty nice.
Looks nice, too.
It does, it does.
I move we pass pending ordinance three oh one six.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, would you like to suspend the rules and move on?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, on suspension of rules only, on pending ordinance thirty sixteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. You can go to third and final, if you'd like.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second to pass pending ordinance thirty sixteen, uh, putting five hundred dollars in the clerk treasurer's office to buy some new chairs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
That's a transfer, is it not?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Pending ordinance thirty seventeen, this is a transfer in cemetery. We're going to go five hundred dollars from commercial to building materials and supplies. And I'm not sure who's asking for that.
Me.
Man, big spending. Where are you going to spend?
Another five hundred dollars. Um, they have some volunteers that are, uh, doing some, working on cemetery restoration on the stones up there, may need some supplies.
Okay. We have money in cemetery.
It was in other industrial services.
Okay, so we're just transferring. Okay. All right. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend rules?
So moved.
On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm ready for third and final reading on pending ordinance thirty seventeen, putting five hundred dollars in cemetery supplies.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We got that done. Pending ordinance thirty twelve, this ordinance is an additional appropriation for the, uh, from the riverboat for fuel. And, uh, I think, uh, I, I'm not sure how you want to handle that. Uh, we tabled it.
Your honor?
Yes.
I don't have that.
Well, you got it last time.
Oh, okay.
We tabled it from the last week.
Yeah. I, didn't we discuss about reducing that, your honor?
I, I think we, we still are not sure about, the fire chief's not here, but I don't think we're sure about what the state said. I'd like to table that again tonight, if we can.
Yeah, yes.
So moved.
And I will motion to that.
Yes.
I need a motion to table pending ordinance thirty twelve. Got it?
Yeah.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll keep that on the back burner. Pending ordinance thirty eighteen, this ordinance is an additional appropriation for the riverboat for the last payment to the bicentennial, and as you asked me to have a public hearing on the robotics and bicentennial, we'll have that tonight. We have a public hearing to put five, fifteen thousand dollars, the last payment into the bicentennial, and one thousand into robotics, which they were here and explained to you last time. On public hearing, anybody like to discuss this issue? Is there anybody here would like to discuss this is, issue or say anything? Third and final times, your chance. Anybody would like to discuss this issue? None appearing, I'm going to pause the public hearing, give it to the council for consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to accept pending ordinance thirty eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to accept pending ordinance thirty eighteen, which would put fifteen thousand, the last payment to the bicentennial, and one thousand in robotics from the riverboat fund. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty eighteen on third and final reading, which would put fifteen thousand into the bicentennial, one thousand in robotics. On suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. You can move to third, if you'd like.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to consider pending ordinance thirty eighteen on third and final reading, putting fifteen thousand dollars into the bicentennial fund and one thousand to robotics. Any further discussion? Anybody out there? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Well, we've done all the hard work, this, uh, public forum. Does anybody here have anything tonight they'd like to discuss? Ruby? Your yard looks pretty.
Thank you.
First aid unit, would you like, I want you to say, tell about the three men you hired today. Real quickly. These guys want to get home before dark. You didn't bring your paper with you.
Yep.
Okay. We've been, uh, we had a man resign or retire today after thirty-three years, thirty-five, thirty-five years. We've been looking at whether we should use part-time or whether we should go into full-time. He did a calculation, and we can actually, by going with full-time, we can actually save around ten thousand dollars. Give it to them, I've read it several times.
Yeah, I have.
So he recommended three of the part-time people today, and, uh, Board of Works put them in, and of course, their, their wages are in the budget, so, uh, they're ready to go.
Dale, does this put you up at your, where you're supposed to be?
No, this puts full staff.
By getting three, okay.
They'll be able to have four on the unit at all times, being able to run two ambulances in town.
That's good. Do a good job.
They have complete uniforms and everything. Pardon me? Do they have complete uniforms? We'll have to add a little bit to it, but we do have a, a line item. They have clothes.
They already have some.
Were they part-time prior?
All three were.
Give their names and qualifications, please.
Uh, we have James Christopher Blades, who is an advanced DMT. James Burns is an advanced DMT, and Larry Schweier is a paramedic.
Two are from Fayette County, or Connersville, and one is not. It's hard to get paramedics that live in Connersville, but we stole one. We got one. I just wanted that to report to you. Any questions on why we did it, or you'll hear it on the street, or? The new Obamacare that's going to come in requires if anyone works thirty hours or more has to have health insurance furnished. And, uh, so using part-time people in fire and police is almost going to be useless because work one shift and you've got twenty-four hours in, you only got six hours left.
Fire any EMS?
What did I say?
Police.
Fire EMS, now.
Police still works, okay.
Police still work.
So we still have part-timers in, or?
Yeah, we won't, uh, keep as many, but we'll have a few.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Anything else under public forum? None appearing, old business, anybody? Nancy?
This sort of involves public, the public, so that's why I want to say it. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize a lady who comes to every city council meeting because she wants to keep abreast of what is going on, and because she cares about Connersville and its people. Thank you, Ruby Sunnery.
Four hours, can't, you know, I, I say, you guys, you know, you don't have no complaints if you don't, you know, bad.
That's right. We appreciate it.
Ruby also does a model job of keeping her property nice, especially, I'm going to say this again, because of the bicentennial. I would like to see everybody keep their property like Ruby does, because we want to be proud of it. So every time that you get a chance, help your neighbor, whatever you can do, let's keep our property as nice as we can. Okay, we're done with old business and miscellaneous business.
About that building.
That's what I'm going to talk about right now. We have three, or we did have three bids at the, uh, Board of Works today to take the apartment complex at four twenty-five West Eighth down. And, uh, the cheapest one was nineteen...
Six forty.
Six forty. And the Board of Works accepted that bid pending you funding it, and it's nineteen thousand...
Six hundred and forty dollars.
Six hundred and forty dollars. Chief?
Please close your bid, John.
Huh?
Close your bids. Close.
Yeah, we're not high enough to have to have bids, it's cool.
Uh, we had three quotes from, uh, local contractors and, uh, and the nineteen thousand, uh, six forty was, uh, the cheapest. I talked to him the day and what he would do is, uh, he would, uh, basically put all the concrete and, uh, and, uh, the brick of this building into part of the fill to fill this thing up, take all the wood out and everything else. And, uh, then he would, uh, knock down the foundation around there, probably two or three feet to make it, uh, make the property level. And then he would put fill in there to make it, uh, one, one smooth level. Then, uh, city's supposed to provide the dumpsters materials for this, this afternoon, the Board of Works meeting. We, uh, maybe came up with another idea to have city trucks haul that off instead of having, paying for a dumpster. And, uh, uh, Superintendent Jobe, uh, said that felt that we could probably do that with, uh, three or four dump trucks and, and save us a big cost on...
Where you gonna haul to, Dave?
Landfill. We'd have to haul the...
I think dumpsters, aren't they four hundred dollars? Four hundred dollars.
Nineteen thousand dollars to knock it down and we have to pay for the removal?
The other bid was forty-two thousand.
That was the cheapest one.
That was the cheapest one.
I think, I think past practice has always been that way, if, if standing on correct.
No, we, what we're trying to do is if we take it down ourselves, we do. And we buy dumpsters. There's no way we can take this down. It's only three or four feet from the other house. And tell them the condition.
Uh, the, the property, it's, it's dilapidated. I mean, I'm, I wouldn't walk in, in it tonight for today, in the daytime. It's, it, the ceilings are falling in, everything else, bricks are falling out of the walls and, and, uh, it's been, uh, approved to be, uh, done something with, what, John, back in two thousand ten?
I was thinking later than that, but I'm not sure.
Anyway, it's, we have to do something with it. And there's really not much there are boarded up.
Who owns it, Dave?
John. Can you help me out there? I don't have that big of a front end.
There's a man that used to live, I don't think we know where he lives now, but there was a man that lived in Cambridge City. It was originally financed by one of our financial institutions at about seventy-six thousand. I called the financial institution and asked them to consider bringing it up to code. They immediately transferred it to the owner and just actually wiped out the debt and gave it to him. He has nothing to do with it, hasn't done anything with it for years. Animals are running out, kids are playing in it, and it's a danger. The neighbors are on us.
So there's no hope with the city recouping their costs?
Well, we can put a twenty thousand dollar lien against it. I did talk to Mr. Barton today, Barker, who will appraise this commercial real estate, and it's not an official appraisal, but he said, you know, your lot might be worth ten when you get it cleaned up, somebody wanted it. Uh, but we can put twenty thousand dollar lien against it because there's four apartments in there.
Is this the, uh, the one that's been on the list longest to be torn down?
Yes. It's already been a, a judgment ruled against it back several years ago.
Do we have any other ones that have judgments ruled against them?
Uh, I think there's some pending, but nothing, I don't think there's anything that's really been, uh, like this one is.
No, we haven't filed any lawsuits for...
No.
Do you know who we have money for this?
No.
You don't have to appropriate money for it.
The Board of Works thought, just like you do, Mr. Creach, what do we do? It's gonna kill somebody, it's gonna hurt somebody, some kids are gonna get hurt. It's on our laps. The Constitution says we are to protect the citizens of Connersville, so what are we gonna do?
Yup.
Where would we take the money from?
We'd have to take it from the general fund.
General fund. It has to be done, I know that.
Have you been overlooked at it, Nancy?
Oh, yeah. It's a mess.
Well, if it was in your backyard or next to you, you'd be down here.
My concern is, is if some kids go in there playing and there's no, like I said, it's just, the building's insecure and everything else and somebody falls through the basement or a ceiling falls in on them or something like that and, and, and this judgment's been ruled, the city didn't do anything with it, tear it down, board it up, do something with it. Uh, then I feel like there's a possibility that there could be a, uh, a lawsuit or something toward, uh, the city of Connersville in regards to this property not being secure, especially after a judgment was made against it. Am I being correct there, John?
Well, it, you know, the city doesn't own the property, it's, it's owned by others. So the, the primary liability is, is, is with the owner. But on the other hand, if the city sees a dangerous instrumentality and doesn't do anything to correct it, the other option here would be to board it up. That would be a way to keep kids out of it. Board up the doors, windows and all that sort of thing, but it's still falling down. And I, I think that's probably a waste of money.
I, I, we had one there at, um, Twenty Third and Indiana. It's boarded up, John.
Yep.
This guy, we fought that for years.
Yeah.
And I had that place up on Flint Drive, it's full of mo- mold. And we weren't, we didn't have the funds to do anything with that. I complained about the Bunsen Doll Building, or what I call the Bunsen Doll Building. We haven't done anything with that.
Well, I have Twelfth and Grand, we're still waiting on that.
Right.
But the thing is, with these buildings, you're like Twelfth and Grand, he's gotta board it up. I haven't heard anything back from him and I was supposed to hear something this month. Uh, uh, he's supposedly, uh, sold on contract and, and the guy who bought it is supposed to be starting in May. So I don't know what he's on to. But there again, we, we, we've already made the attempt and we boarded up the bottom, uh, all these windows, uh, ourselves and then, well, we started to, take that back, then he came in and said he would do it. At least, we had a crew up there, if I'm not mistaken, we didn't have to do it, he came in and did it. So, you know, really, we can go through the motions here and it can go all the way to what's gonna happen or what maybe is gonna happen, I don't know, with this building. But, but there's a lot of houses in this town in the same condition. And believe me, we can send letters, they can ignore them, we can send, put liens on properties and everything else, but they're still there, falling apart. So we don't have only one option, two options, either tear it down or board them up.
Board it up.
I got, and I got two right on top of my head, one's on Nickel.
The Red House down here, we got to tear it down, it's coming right behind us.
And, and it's on, on some Nickel and, uh, and second, and then the other one, now, the other one's up on, uh, on, uh, Junkin and Summit, and it's owned by a local contractor. And, uh, he's acknowledged that, uh, he pays taxes on everything else, but it's another, it's a death trap for kids. And it's, and it's dilapidated. And then for us to go in there, it's, I'll tell you, it'd be almost impossible. It, it would cost so much money just to board that place up because it's, it's got big last doors that are all broken out and windows and all this, and it's, it's a, and there's three buildings on it. There's one built, the one house has been built on, built on, built on to, and there's a shed and there's an old garage. And, and that whole place needs to be put it off. But, but this guy...
Well, let's get back to the issue at hand here. The Board of Works, as ordered to accept this bid, to tear this building down, you gotta fund it before it's gonna sit, one of the other. That's the only thing we can do. I guess you could, uh, appropriate money to board it up. But it, we boarded it up ten times and it's, it's a convenient nuisance. The kids onboard it and play in there and now the bricks and according to the Board of Works this morning, they said that the walls are bulging, it could collapse it because there's no roof on it. The roof is leaking so bad, it's rotting and it's beginning to bulge. And it's a big two-story thing.
You can look right into the front and, and see the, the, everything's falling in from the, from the top.
So we have, we either gotta vote to do it or we gotta, you know, that, public safety is, is our number one. That's why we have a police department and a first aid unit, a fire department. We, we have to provide a safe environment for the people, whether we like it or not.
I'll make the motion that we approve.
How much you wanna approve then? Nineteen thousand, six forty or four thousand?
What we, what we're gonna try to do, Tom, is use our own trucks and haul it over there rather than rent dumpsters. Joby thinks we can do it cheaper with diesel fuel and manpower that we're already paying. I estimated at least, uh, probably twenty-five, thirty dumpsters. However, Mr. Frank, who has the bid, says that he can use most of the brick to fill the basement because it has a three-quarter basement in it. Is anyone gonna second that motion?
Second it.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor. Hold them for discussion. Come forth, council, discuss.
I can't see spending money that we don't have for that when we have numerous properties that need the same thing.
Probably. Is it among the worst of the worst?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I was up one in January, it's full of mold, and that's extremely dangerous too. We didn't have the money for that.
He went up by you, or up where you took me?
You were with me.
We did get him to come clean up some of it.
The mold's still there, your honor.
But he did clean up around the outside.
You talked about the one on Flint.
Yeah, the one you took care of for me.
Yeah, he cleaned that up. I've, I've been keeping an eye on that too. In fact, he got pretty concerned when he got his letter.
Right. We do have an owner there that comes forth.
Well, I, I, just me, I, I just can't see spending that much money. That's just me.
So we do have sort of like a ranking system? Are you like the one?
He is the one.
I mean...
Well, first off, it's not so much a ranking system on what property's worse than this one, like, it depends on who owns the property, what bank owns the property, and what their intentions are to do with it.
And what's the most dangerous? That, that, that's what concerns me.
Well, what, with, like, this property is a two-story brick building. It's not a one-story house, wood house. It's a, a brick building and it's two stories. It's a tall building. And that thing falls or whatever, it's always gonna get hurt if they're around it. Now, one story is, it's wood, you know, it's, you know...
We've taken a lot of them down. We can do that. We just can't take anything that big down, especially, it's only two foot from the other house.
How's the contractor going to do it? What's he know that we don't know?
They know how to do it.
They, they also have equipment we don't have. They got a trackhoe and them things just gotta have a...
Dip a thumb on.
And they can, they can go in there and do things that a backhoe can't do.
Inside. You know, I proposed to you two, three years ago, maybe we should look at buying a trackhoe and teach someone to run a trackhoe. But there again, you still gotta get rid of all the stuff. And that's the expensive part.
We're paying for that anyways, correct? We're paying for that anyways, correct?
How much is a trackhoe?
About a hundred thousand dollars.
Private building.
It's five properties.
Fifty, fifty, fifty to a hundred.
Yeah, probably twenty-five.
So is it worse than the Red House, the little Red House property? Cause I had somebody ask me about that too.
Yes, yes. Uh, right now, uh, I talked to Dave, I talked to John, I'm looking to board that one up for now.
Okay, cause I, I drive past that, that, the one we're talking about every day, going home, and it is awful. Now, I haven't been in it.
And, and, and it's, it's on a main drag, you know?
Well, that funeral home next to it just stinks. I mean, we need to do something with that. What'd you think? Watch it.
You wanna tear it down too?
I think, do we have extra money?
We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? We have a real call vote.
Councilman Creach?
No.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
No.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
No.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
No.
Four to three, no. Okay, we're gonna have to decide what we're gonna do with it. I don't think there's any way we can sit here and do nothing. Is there, John? Uh, I wouldn't recommend it.
I'd like to know what the council members have voted against it, what their solution to the problem is. Would one of those speak up?
Sure, I'll do it. If, if we're running this problem often, and, and the reason why is that we don't have a trackhoe, let's look and buy a trackhoe. I mean, it, it, there's gonna be lots of these properties around. And if we don't have the equipment to take care of them ourselves, maybe we should look at that. And I don't think throwing twenty thousand at, at, at a single property helps us to remedy the problem. If there's a problem, I think we gotta look at the remedy of the problem. And I think it, if, it's looking at buying a used trackhoe.
Is the safety a concern of yours, Gabe?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Then what do you propose we do with this building? Let it sit there until?
Until, well, what's it doing right now? It's sitting there.
Well, that's the issue though. The issue is we can't let it sit there.
If, if we throw twenty thousand dollars at, at a project and it needs a trackhoe to tear it down, let's look at buying a trackhoe.
So you're gonna prize the twenty grand to a trackhoe?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
If that's what we need to do, then let's do that. I mean, that makes more sense to me than keep farming it out.
But a trackhoe is a hundred thousand, you use one fifty?
Uh, you can get a decent one for seventy-five or eighty.
Yeah.
So where we gonna get the money for that? Oh, well, we could lease it, I suppose.
We can lease one. We thought about leasing one just for the season. We try not to tear them down in the winter time.
I mean, we run into this situation often, so if we run into it often, let's look at...
There's lots of them that are sitting here.
Come forth.
The problem isn't only tearing it down, we've gotta get rid of everything.
Well, we're paying for that anyways.
But there's a huge expense to that.
But we're paying for that anyways.
But it's gonna add to what we're already paying. It's not like we paid for that.
Well, this nineteen thousand wasn't to haul it away. We were gonna haul it away, correct?
Yeah, we were gonna pay for that too.
So that's twenty thousand dollars towards...
Ten grand.
Yeah. So that's twenty thousand dollars.
He has an excavating company. His basic business is to put in, uh, bridges and culverts and stuff like that. He does all kinds of excavating. He's got big equipment. I want you to tell the council what you think it would take to get a trackhoe. I'm sure you got it in your mind and what it would take to train someone to operate one to tear buildings down and or within two foot of another building.
It's gonna take, uh, size trackhoe you're gonna need, it's gonna take somewhere around fifty, seventy-five thousand for the trackhoe.
This is a new trackhoe?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure.
This is about a two thousand model.
Yeah.
That's probably without the thumbs. Then you're gonna turn around and buy a trailer, a tractor trailer big enough to haul it, because you don't have anything big enough to haul it.
And that is how much?
Depending on how old the trailer and what you find, but it can cost you, trailer can cost you thirty thousand. The trust, uh, tractor costs you all about...
Do we have a truck that'll haul it now? We do not have a truck that'll haul it.
We got a truck that'll pull the trailer, but we don't have a truck that will haul it.
I wouldn't pull it with your dump truck.
You wouldn't? But that, don't we have one tamper?
Yeah, but I don't think it's big enough. Not for, oh, I'll just take that back. You'd have to buy a new tri-axle trailer to do it and, and that trailer's gonna cost you probably thirty thousand, give or take, if the, the truck would handle it enough.
I'm concerned about the operator.
That's gonna take some time.
So how long would it take to train an operator that could go next to another house and tear a house down? Before you felt comfortable with them?
Year. I wouldn't let, I wouldn't let our guys up next to it. Though, and Dustin's been running them for about five year, four years now. I wouldn't put him up next to that building.
Takes a special person to be able to do that.
And I'd put Dustin up about, against about anybody, but I wouldn't let him up next to that building. Not the way that one's coming out. So, but it'd, it'd take some time to train one.
So the trackhoe does not move by itself? I mean...
It runs on the streets.
It's on tracks like a bulldozer track.
Yeah, okay, so you can't...
But you can't drive it.
It's not rubber tracks?
No. If you hunt, you could possibly find one, but they're not that big, won't be on rubber. They're on a, uh, like a street track, but everywhere it goes, it won't cut into the, about like top, has them bad. But it will scuff them and...
Right, right.
You'll have scuff marks everywhere. And then the hotter it gets, the more it's gonna sink. Cause you're, you're talking probably a thirty-six thousand pound machine. Maybe a little higher, depending on the size you give, but... If you're gonna get one to tear it down, I'd get one big enough to tear about anything down in town.
Yeah.
That's why you're not a business tearing houses down.
Pretty much.
I knew you knew all the answers because he is an excavating business, he's got people working for him. And we got up against this two years ago, I proposed this, and we hit the same thing. We gotta go out and buy this thing or lease it. We gotta train someone to operate it. We gotta buy life-saving insurance. Uh, you're talking about training, we don't have anybody. We're used to digging ditches, we're putting water lines in, we're, but we're not demolition experts and it takes, there's only about three or four people in downtown that you can trust to take a building down that's right next to another building. And that's basically Jerry Raider Franks, the guy down south of town down here.
Atkins.
Atkins. And am I, have I missed anybody?
Yeah, Gunninger.
Get it, getting, yeah. But the other bids were forty-five thousand, thirty-eight thousand and...
But all those guys been in, doing that, that type of work for ten, fifteen years then, and more, so...
I, I, I just don't know what I'm gonna do when people call and, I guess we're gonna try to board it up.
If I may, this...
Come to the podium.
This building, I was there this morning, I wouldn't, the back steps are, they're gone. If Nancy's been to the backside of it, she knows what I'm saying. I wouldn't put one of my people to the back of it to put a piece of plywood over the door in the way. It's a veneer brick on top of everything else you see. It's just falling apart. I wouldn't put any, any of you in it or myself or Connie's worst enemy, that's just how bad it is. And it's so close to the other houses, the brick, if you touch it, it's, it's gonna come off. I don't know what kind of special insurance these folks have, but I sure wouldn't want the city to have to come up with different insurances to, to tear something like this down. That's just how bad it is. And I don't know why more of it hadn't fallen in. But I was there this morning, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't go in it.
You won't board it up?
I wouldn't board it up. I'd be afraid of, the back door, the, the veneer brick is coming off of it and there's a big hole up there. I'd be afraid to, to take a piece of plywood and try to put over the door and nail it to it. I, I wouldn't personally do it and I'll do about anything. But I, I wouldn't, I'd be afraid of it.
So you, you won't board it up even if I ask you to?
Well, if you ask me to, I'd do my best. I'd have to do something to knock more brick off of it before I would go there. I wouldn't do it without the brick, cause the brick is, it's, it's not just falling off. It's, it's bulged out and it's, and it's straight or roll, it's just straight or roll down the ground. It's, the brick isn't just straight up and down, it's, it's, it's bulged out or whatever name you wanna put to that, but... No, I wouldn't get underneath there and beat on with a hammer or, or try to secure plywood to it.
So is this the worst building we're talking about? I mean, the very worst? I mean, most the other...
Probably the worst in the, in the situation and the location.
So the most of the other buildings we could do with our own man? Something. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, to try to get...
But, but still, to really tear a house down, you need a TracO. Your, your backhoe is not designed to go in and.
It's not big enough, don't reach for it.
Can you, now, I, I don't know anything about it, can you rent a TracO and then find somebody qualified to use it? I mean, would that, that would kinda help us out a little bit. I mean, you know.
They'd have to come with an operator, and they should come with.
I mean, if you lease one, you, I mean, you're basically buying it.
McAllister's Richmond, they, they, they have that kind of equipment.
It's just the operator that's.
That's what I was saying, but if you lease one, do you lease the, the trailer and anything that goes with it?
They bring it to you and drop it off and come pick it up when you're done.
Oh, well, that's right.
You got anybody over there that can run a TracO?
Not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask anybody to, not in that situation, that's, that's it. Because of the house to the east of it. And if it was, you know, ten feet apart, I wouldn't have, I'd have more of a chance to, to save it and, and be in, being all right. But as close as the other house is, I don't even know who owns it, don't care, but I, I'd be afraid that.
Well, he's, he's been here before, before Board of Works complaining.
I can't remember his name. But I'm just afraid of that being on his house.
I, I can't remember.
Jim, is it Jim?
Mr. King owns the house right next door to it.
Leota King, isn't it?
Broke King?
Leota's the wa, the woman, I don't know who her husband is, does anybody know?
Is it my bro?
Leota is the one.
I don't think, I think it's Mr. Leota.
Anyway, that's, and the beams that, that, that aren't rotted, they're, they're pretty good sized in that old building, you know how an old brick building like that, back in the day I was built, if some of them aren't rotted, they're pretty good sized beams in the, in the top, and they're, see, because it's got a flat roof on it. So it's got some pretty good sized floor joists and, and the ceiling both.
May I say something?
Thank you.
You folks gotta, you know, we have, we have, I guess there's ordinance enforcing going on here, you know, with the grass and stuff, and buildings are in a real situation here. And, and this is, this is probably the first time in a while we've had a, a situation like that. And we have, we're gonna have more situations like this. Now, I think, you know, you're talking about buying a TracO and all this, well, I think that's a pretty good idea. But, you know, that takes some, you know, look what it took to get a, a trash truck. You know, what I'm saying is, you, you, you go out and you get some estimates, or you go buy a used one, you're gonna have to search for it and everything else. Meanwhile, this ain't a place that's gonna fall down and hurt somebody. You know, I think, you guys already voted, and I, I would give it some consideration, 'cause this isn't the end of it, 'cause you're gonna hear some more complaints, and I imagine after tonight's TV show, you're gonna have, probably, you guys individually are gonna get some phone calls, because something's gotta be done now, not six months down the road or a year from now. And we decided to appropriate some money to buy a, a trailer and a tractor trailer to, or to, to, to move this thing, and we're gonna pay fifty, eighty thousand dollars.
I got a question, I mean, I'm trying to be nice.
Sure.
How did this get moved to the top of all the properties? I asked you about property in January, and you said, very kindly, Tom, I got a whole list of properties.
Yeah.
How did this one get moved to the top?
Because there was a judgment already done on that a couple of years ago.
Just this one? N, no, no, no other properties?
I haven't filed a lawsuit, uh, because of lack of money to, uh, uh, enforce the judgment for several years. I, I don't recall exactly, I, I would say two or three years, maybe two.
I thought it was two thousand and ten.
Yeah, I don't think so, I think it was later than that.
I got, I got it.
I think we brought this to a head, Tom, is when Mr. King came in and asked us to go look at it. And when they went over and looked at it, I, I'm kinda sheltered from it, 'cause there's a house between me and it, and I never knew it was that bad, so I walked down there to take a look at it, I wouldn't go within five foot of it. I didn't, I owned that thing at one time, I paid a hundred and sixty, seventy thousand dollars for that one thing. I looked it up until nineteen eighty, but my God, it's fallen down, it's, it's bulged out, and it's gonna go over on Mr. King's house. That's why he's been here saying, hey, fix it, do something. And so I told David to go out and get bids like we always do. We haven't tore a house down for two years, but if you're not going to appropriate money to tear the houses down, there's no point in us going through all the footwork. We spent a lot of footwork. We, we got the red house needs to come down, probably the one at Twelfth, we gotta clean up a mess, where did I tell you today?
Well, yeah. But we can do all those other ones you're speaking of, right, with, without a TracO?
Not early, not having a TracO.
We can, we can do the red house at Twelfth Street.
I think the writing's on the wall, I mean, I think it's worth looking into a TracO, then we can address all the properties.
But that's, that's fine on down the road, we gotta do something now.
That's why I asked to give you, if he'd board it up. And he says he might, and I don't blame him, I wouldn't go either.
But this, this is just the starting of, and, 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 as Mary, you said it, I mean, wha, what are we spinning our wheels for? On getting on people's, in properties and stuff, and of, 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 of doing something with their properties, and especially when the one's been totally, uh, person who obviously owns it, isn't in position to do anything anymore. And so he don't, they don't have any money, they don't have nothing. And bank.
The bank borrows their hands of it.
So, not, all the properties are that way, and a lot of properties are salvageable and some aren't.
Problem is, the state will not allow you to take possession of the property, even though you remove the object on it, the abandoned structure. The owner retains possession of that land. They don't give you the permission to take possession and possibly sell it and recoup some of your expenses. The state legislature doesn't understand the problem. You talk to them, I talk to them, they still don't understand it.
I've tested them twice in front of the state legislature, trying to get some help. Every city, every mayor has the same problem, you've called Richmond, you've called Muncie, you've called any place, and what they do is about like we do. They got a little more money, they'll take five or six houses down here that are the worst ones. We haven't taken a house down only ourselves, and I'd say where we spent the money to hire somebody, I can't remember the last one.
Was it on Third Street Hill?
Yeah, I took one down last year.
On Third Street Hill?
Fifth Street.
Yeah, that was, we, we let that about fall down before we took it down.
Fifth Street, Fifth Street.
So we took it down ourselves, didn't we?
Took one down in Beasley.
Yeah, Fifth Street Hill was the last, about two years ago.
Right, we had to pay to have that done because we didn't.
So I think, then, then we took one down Third Street Hill, too.
Yes.
That's been longer.
Well, the decision's been made, and, uh, we're ready for, uh...
Well, I'm concerned we need to do something with the place, don't we? I mean, I'm a little concerned about it.
Well, I would ask the, so the council, be able to go over there and look at it, I guess. I went over and looked at it, but it, you know, I can't see it from my place, but it's down on the curve.
It's on the curve, on the alley.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Uh, if the bank owns that property, is that correct?
No. I told you today, that a local bank had a mortgage on it for around seventy-six thousand dollars. I called that bank two, three years ago, asking if we could work with them to bring it up to, it wasn't as bad as it is today. They said they were not messing with it, they washed their hands, they gave a clear title to the owner, who then lived in Cambridge City. They just wiped the slate clean and said, you have it, we don't want anything, they got out of it. The owner has not responded in any way to any of our notices in any way, because I know he has no money to do anything with. He doesn't have the money to tear it down. So now it's just been abandoned for at least five years. It's been abandoned, and the roof leaks of that, and now it's just got desperately bad where it's bulging and it's gonna fall. As Ron Goldiron at the Board of Works said, why don't we wait till spring? Because in the spring, it'll be laying on the ground, we won't have to, we won't have to tear it down.
Mike, it, it's like Fran said, what it boils down to, we'll take taxpayers' money, spend about thirty thousand dollars and level it, and somebody's got a free lock. That's what it boils down to.
Well, we do get a twenty thousand dollar lien against it. Now, we had a bill in the legislature this year, that if the lien through appraisals was more than the property's worth, the city could take possession. Guess what? It didn't pass. And if we could do that, you can take that piece of ground, and maybe there's a neighbor on each side of that piece of ground when you get it. You can ask a neighbor to give you ten thousand or twenty and recoup some of your money.
They would vacate in these two alleys.
But you can't, we can't do it, because the owner still owns that piece of ground. And not only that, from then on, we got a moment.
Are they paying taxes on that piece of property? Well, why is it, is it gone up for tax sale?
Yeah, but who would buy it?
Well, I know, but won't the commissioners be able to take it then?
Well, I presume they could, yeah.
Don't you have like a year?
They'll sell it for two hundred bucks, the commissioners say. And then we get two hundred bucks back, that'll, that'll help us a lot.
I don't think the commissioners wanna tear it down either.
Well, I don't think they do either.
They don't wanna give the city a title, if they do, then they, that's the problem.
Couldn't they, couldn't they give it to the city and give it to the landlord?
Well, yeah, there's some things like that.
Well, I wanna tell you something, guys, this council, this mayor, and this city is responsible for the health and welfare of the people of this town. And I shouldn't even be saying, 'cause it over there, it affects me, it doesn't affect me, 'cause there's a house in between. But it is a dangerous and unsafe place, it's terrible. And, uh, I wish you would've given us some direction tonight as to what we can do. I guess you could go over there and put a chain link fence around it and let it collapse.
But that's not gonna help Mr., uh, with chain links fists, it's not gonna keep, keep the, the materials from going on Mr. King's house, is it? I mean, it's, I mean, it's about this close, isn't it? Well, maybe a little bit, a couple of things. Huh?
I was about six, about six feet, maybe? About six feet.
Not much, very, very near.
It's almost dead, I'm gonna answer.
Yes, I have another question, uh, Ron Goldiron brought up today, if that structure falls right now, who's responsible, the owner or the city?
The owner. The owner is responsible, but we are, have an obligation to our citizens to keep them safe.
I understand that.
That's why we have first aid unit, police, fire, trash removal, we have an obligation to our citizens to keep them safe.
I understand.
And they have no, they, they should not have to worry about walking down a sidewalk and have a wall fall on.
I understand that.
John, can they come back on us, since they're in their, uh, judgment?
The owner is responsible.
To tear it down?
Yeah, but we can't find him.
Yeah, the owner's responsible, but he's, uh, he, he has no assets, he, he's judgment proof, you're not gonna recover anything from that owner.
Well, if, uh, say it fell tonight and two people were killed, what would happen to that owner? Would he just walk scot-free, face no charges, 'cause he's bankrupt? Would he just be absolved from, from being fined, or what would happen to him?
Yeah, h, his owning the property is that lapidate is not a crime. And if it falls and hurts someone, that's not a crime, it, it's a civil liability, it's negligence. And, uh, he could be sued, a judgment could be taken against him, but it would never be collected. And, and to answer what was your question?
Just, since there is a judgment to tear it down, since we deemed it unsafe, can they come after, I mean, I don't know, I don't know about the law, but could they come after us for negligence for not doing it?
That, we would admit, we would be included in the lawsuit, I can guarantee you that. It, it's a dangerous instrumentality, and the city knows it, has acknowledged it, recognized it, and has indicated, has a judgment to, uh, if the owner doesn't bring it into compliance with the ordinance, the city, uh, uh, it has the authority to do so, and also to go to the extent of demolishing the property of this. So it's, um, yeah, we, we, we would be involved in, in that, uh, probably because the owner has no asset. And they wanna get someone with a deep pocket.
I'm not very concerned about whether someone sues us or not, we get sued every month. I'm concerned.
We have liability.
I'm concerned that the little kids from Seventh Street walk by that building every morning to catch the bus over on the corner, Eighth and, what is it, Walnut or?
Eighth and Sycamore.
Eighth and Sycamore, that's where they catch the bus, and they walk by that every single morning of the week when school's in. You can watch them tomorrow morning. If that wall would fall, or those little kids are curious, if they would go in there where David won't go, which is wide open, and two or three get killed in there, or even one fall down that basement steps that are rotted out and gnawing, that's what concerns me.
If it was our grandkids, would we want them to do it? Would we work at it?
That's why this city has a responsibility to keep its citizens safe. But if a decision's been made.
I, I think at the very least, uh, the city ought to consider doing something, even though it may not be terribly adequate, to make the property as safe as possible. Boarding up what can be boarded up, doing whatever you can to keep people out of it, kids out of it, uh, i, it's, if you don't do anything, then that's the worst thing.
How about a chain link fence?
Uh, I don't know, I, I don't know.
Go to the back of it with a backhoe, knock the brick down?
Well, yeah, that, that's, I was gonna suggest, and it's not my place to make policy decisions, but can you not do, knock some of it down that's dangerously falling?
I, I would consider that, but I wouldn't do it the way it sits right this minute.
Yeah, I mean, at least.
The south, the southeast corner's falling in, it's the worst thing, and it's about twenty foot in here.
Close up that door, I, I'd knock the brick off above it. 'Cause some of it's already gone, and it wouldn't take a lot to knock some more down, I suppose.
Well, I guess we'll have to cope with it.
But I don't know if I, legally, can do that.
Yeah, we have, we have a judgment to bring it into code or to destroy it.
Well, I can take a look at that.
Anybody have anything, um, about a miscellaneous business, uh, Nancy? Tom?
Yes, uh, May eighteenth is the Solvest District Community Shred Day Transfer Station. We'll have a commercial shredder there for all of the Fayette County residents, for your personal, uh, documents, tax records, checks, whatever. We, uh, again, I say May eighteenth, Saturday from April twelve, I'm gonna add in the, uh...
What's, what's the hours?
April twelve, May eighteenth.
In May.
Week on Saturday, then we'll do the same thing in the fall. We had real good participation last fall.
Anything on a miscellaneous, uh, David?
No.
Dave, Gabe?
Yeah, I got one, or two things, actually. First thing, uh, I wanna thank everybody that came out to the CHS plant sale. We had a great crowd out there, and, uh, sold a lot of plants, so I would appreciate everybody for supporting the kids there. Uh, and then the second was, uh, Mr. Baker, um, have you heard and, and discovered, uh, who actually owns the property, is the old railroad bed? Is that the city's property, or is that?
Yeah, I, I met with Kenny Burgess, and he brought some deeds in, and we took a look at them. It, it, it appears that the, uh, the fee simple interest in the, uh, railroad was, uh, much, not, not, not nearly as long as Kenny first thought. It was, uh, less, uh, than going all the way to the city limits. It was, it was a lesser amount, and I don't recall the exact footage now, but it, and I called it to his attention. And so that's something that he's inquiring into, he's trying to determine what the situation may be, and, uh, uh, there, there's, there's a question in my mind as to whether or not, it was a quick claim deed. You know, a quick claim deed does not warrant title. The, uh, when you, when you give someone a quick claim deed, you don't guarantee you have anything. I can give you a quick claim deed to the Brooklyn Bridge. And, uh, and I'm not being sarcastic, I could. And, uh, I, I don't have to have a, a ownership of it. And that's what I'm a little concerned about, the railroad giving quick claim deeds, or the state giving quick claim deeds to the city, because there's no guarantee of title at all. So I, one possibility would be to have a title company run a search on it, and an in-depth search to determine exactly what, uh, what, what the railroad had way back when they first acquired the asset, whether or not they acquired title to it, fee simple title, or whether or not they had easements only. Because if they had easements, easements only, they certainly can't convey title to anyone. All they can do is relinquish the easement, and then the adjacent property owners, uh, have the property to use without the easement being there. But the, um, uh, title search may be, uh, something that you may wanna consider. Finding out exactly what the city owns, uh, regarding that former railroad.
So you're saying you're not sure it goes all the way up to Lick Creek?
Well, one deed, one deed was, was, uh, uh, for, uh, uh, about half of, of the, uh, railway in the town, and it seemed to be more likely that it was owned, owned in fee simple than the other.
So there was no warranty deed ever issued to the city?
Never, all, all quick claim, no.
So, if I understand you right, you're, you're saying we don't know, I, I know we don't know about the railroad thing, but are there other properties that we may own that we don't know?
Oh, I suppose.
How do you find that out?
She's got a whole list where you can look at it if you'd like.
But, uh, but are there others out there that are possibilities we own and we don't know that we own them? I mean.
It'd be unlikely, you know, it's, uh, it's possible but unlikely.
There's some little chunks of ground here and there where they rerouted an alley or a load. Over on Grand Avenue in front of Reedman's Lot, the city owns about thirty foot long front there. We've been working with Jimmy Reedman for, I've been working with him for four years, trying to get that straightened out. Uh, there's a piece up on Summit Avenue where they rerouted Summit Avenue. There's a chunk of ground, I think there's others lying around now.
Well, I, I know with this railroad thing, it's confusing, and there's other things, too.
Would a title search be expensive?
Not terribly, I, I think two or three hundred dollars would probably cover it, I, I, I'd recommend it. Talking to the abstract company and for a title search, or if you give me authority, I can do it.
So it's something your committee wants to do? Are you chairing that committee, I can't remember if you're Connie?
Let's do something, Gabe.
I think we should do that, I mean, we, we should know what we own and what responsibility we have them to maintain it.
Well, we have to.
Because there, there were deeds, and see, that gives us, uh, uh, an indication there's some kind of color attached, but we don't know exactly what the title is. So I, I'd recommend getting, having a title search, and I can talk to the abstract company to see what the cost will be. If it's within reason, if you wanna give me a parameter, I'll, uh, I'll do that.
Well, um, I'll give him fifty bucks.
Legal.
Is that something we need to do, or is that something that's administrative?
Go ahead, Mr. Baker, and review that for us, and we'll take it out of the council budget. All right, no, less than five hundred bucks, and see where you get to.
All right.
Is that okay?
That's, that's good. Less than five hundred.
We need to bring it to a solution or something.
If you can't get it done for that, come back to us.
I, I suspect that would be about.
Since we got money appropriated, I will, I'll use that. Okay, we're still under miscellaneous, Gabe, you have, you said you had two things, Arsho and?
Flowering, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Fran?
I'm okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Connie?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay, under the mayor's report, you know, we came to you and asked for money to buy this fingerprint machine. Now we're told they're gonna not require us to have the fingerprint machine. However, we are going to have to have this voice dress, and, tell us about it, I, I get, the state tells us every day.
It's a lie detector test.
I, I wasn't prepared to discuss it, but we need a voice dress machine, I wasn't gonna hit you on it tonight.
Well, I've got that money appropriated for a lie detector.
Well, the voice dress is.